Roll call vote. Mayor Worth is present. I beg your pardon?
Is everybody here we can use the board?
Oh, perfect. So, other than?
Rich.
Mr. Kerr is present, although he wants to vote no.
Okay. And Fairbanks and Cook are gone. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room as accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item on the agenda is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on July 6, 2020, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $450,760.73. Item F, approval of Boswar report of claims in the amount of $72,420.53. Item G, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from the Gage County Historical Society and Museum in the amount of $1,307 for a portion of an exterior beautification project at the Gage County Museum as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Board. Item H, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from Youth Recreation Incorporated in the amount of $5,000 to replace the outfield fence and backstop on field number one at Hannibal Park as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item I, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from William and Doris Walker representing pickleball players in Beatrice and the surrounding area in the amount of $5,000 to resurfacing the tennis courts in Chautauqua Park and changing them into pickleball courts as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item J, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from the city of Beatrice in the amount of $6,000 for the purchase and construction of river access ramps along the Big Blue River near the West Court Street Bridge as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Kerr?
Aye.
Anyone else? And remove Item J. Thank you, Michael. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Grail?
I'd like to have an opportunity to speak about Item J.
Okay. So, we've removed both Item I and Item J, so there'll be time for that discussion, Mr. Grail. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda with the exceptions of Item I and J be approved, accepted, and are ratified as presented.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of Item I and J be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0.
I move that Item I, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from Doris William and Doris Walker representing pickleball players in Beatrice and the surrounding area in the amount of $5,000 to resurfacing the tennis courts in Chautauqua Park and changing them into pickleball courts as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board be approved as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that we further discuss the subject regarding the Chautauqua Park resurfacing of the tennis courts. Mr. Kerr?
I'm not against this, I just don't know what it is. What is a pickleball?
So, pickleball is a sport that is kind of a cross between tennis and badminton, very similar to tennis but a much smaller court that they play on, very popular amongst people throughout the world, but growing in popularity. I think Lincoln has added some courts up there. They have used the tennis courts at Riverside, or excuse me, at Chautauqua Park for the last probably five years for pickleball. In fact, went out and repainted them. And now they wish to actually make them into official pickleball courts, change some of the tennis nets on them so they're actually pickleball nets and some of that stuff.
Okay, I just didn't know what it was.
So, if the tennis court is going north-south, the pickleball will be east-west.
So, they'll get?
Three.
Should be able to get three on there.
There should be three courts on there.
Okay.
Very popular in the southwest.
Okay.
Is it like, do they have like a summer league that plays this thing?
I think they play like every Sunday, so if you're interested, they invite you down there to play.
Sounds good.
Have you played it?
No, I have not.
Any questions from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved 6-0.
I move that Item J, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from city Beatrice in the amount of $6,000 for the purchase and construction of river access ramps along the Big Blue River near the West Court Street Bridge as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board be approved as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that we further discuss Big Blue River ramps at a cost of $6,000 coming from Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Mr. Suthan?
Just wanted to, real quick, just come up here and say thank you to city staff for actually continuing to pursue river access projects through Beatrice Plus and working with other entities throughout our community. And obviously, you guys approving some funds last fall for these river access points. Now, there's some other folks I think are just going to speak a little bit to it, but from Main Street's perspective, the potential economic opportunities that it creates for Beatrice plus the increased community amenities, just the quality of life type of improvements, certainly, I think, speak well for these types of projects. And I hope as the future goes along that we continue to try to develop a river access trail. You know, obviously, this right here, so far, what the city's put forward and through their budget in this is primarily for one access point. You know, as we all know, we could certainly use, you know, definitely need at least two, and that's, I think, part of the plan, but even three or four would not be out of line. And so, just want to, I guess, express a hope that we will continue to develop this and make this type of outdoor, new outdoor recreation possibilities certainly something that's maybe a priority because it definitely has the economic potential to have strong return on our investment as a community. So, I guess, any questions for us? I know in the last fall, I presented with you guys ideas for the plan. I know that the city has been working on that with the West Court Street location. But any questions for myself or Main Street?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Apparently, this is going to be southwest of the bridge, right there, just as you come on Memorial Drive.
Past the dam, yep.
That sandbar that sits in the middle of that, is that going to be a problem for the kayaks and the, whatever they're going to put down there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I know when James and I were discussing the plan, the hope was that the angle of it would allow that you could either paddle out parallel with the dam where there's deeper water and get to the deeper channel on the east side, or if the water is high enough, which probably three-quarters of the year it's high enough where you can go on the west side of that island, that that would also be an option for folks. But that design was designed with the idea that a paddler could go on either side of the island.
Toby, is there any way that the Army Corps engineers could come down and maybe dredge that and get that island out of there?
That island has been there for over 100 years. It's on sandboard and maps back to the dawn of time.
And frankly, some people like going through the shallows, you know, they like trying to go in and around rocks and it just kind of depends, so.
Okey-dokey, I just didn't know if that caused a problem or not.
It shouldn't. In real low-water situations, there's no doubt that the west side of that island will be too shallow to go down.
Any other questions of Michael? Thank you, Michael. Mr. Grail?
Thank you, Mayor. I was excited a couple weeks ago when I saw the article in the newspaper about the YMCA's effort with kayaking. I saw in that a tremendous opportunity, so this project you're doing in my mind becomes part of an overall improvement of a greater plan. Couple things I've learned. Shields Sporting Goods in Lincoln, Nebraska, can't get enough kayaks in to meet the demand. It is a significantly growing fast sport. And what the Y is thinking about, I would hope we could see a future where that area might be improved overall. I don't at this point in time know what it is, but what I believe is there's tremendous potential there. And we'd have to work at it, but I think you could gain in it. I looked at the surrounding population, it's tremendous. I mean, you got Omaha with a half a million people, you got Lincoln with a quarter of a million. It is not uncommon for a kayaker to drive 150 miles to participate in this sport. Of course, I also believe that it's going to take some promotional effort, but I would hope you could work in any manner with the YMCA to see that growth be achieved in the city of Beatrice. Do I have any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Grail? Really appreciate your comments, Ellen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Any other questions regarding Item J? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 6-0. Item J has been approved. We have no public hearings tonight or bids. Next is a resolution, Resolution 6588, establishing various fees.
I move that Resolution Number 6588 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Bilzbach, that Resolution Number 6588 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So, what we're proposing are two changes in the fee resolution before you tonight. The first one is basically a Scribner's error. Plumbing licenses has always been charged a set amount for a two-year time period. However, if you read our fee resolution, it said biennium, which meant you're supposed to charge it twice a year and not biennial, which would mean every two years. And so, we corrected that in the fee resolution. And the second thing is, we added the fee in there for a TIF application that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. I believe we set it for $250, which would at least cover the cost of mailings and publications for applications as they come in.
Questions? From the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Resolution 6588 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to close and vacate certain portions of Maple Street, Ninth Street, and Catulpa Street, all located in Highland Park in addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 20-026. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 20-026. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 20-026 by number the first time, ordinance Number 20-026 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 20-026 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 20-026 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance Number 20-026 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So, we have a number of ordinances and resolutions coming your way tonight, all dealing with the same transaction. All of them deal with the vacation of Maple Street, South Sixth Street, and how do you pronounce that last one?
Catulpa.
Catulpa, thank you. As you can see on the map there, it's the street that's in purple and then the light blue and the dark blue there as well. To give you some indication, the yellow arrow on the left is Highway 77 on the south side of town. Just to the right of that picture would be the golf course, most notably, the driving range is just to the east of this picture. And just north of the picture would be Todd Hido's place, if anybody's familiar with where Todd Hido lives. Anyhow, all of the red properties are owned by the same individual, Mrs. Zimmerman. She came and asked if we would vacate those streets in there that were platted way back when, never been used, never been improved, nothing like that has happened. And so, what you have before you tonight is motions to vacate, again, those three streets and then ultimately sell those to Mrs. Zimmerman. We ranged the price by looking at the price per square foot for this surrounding property and did some math, that's how we came up with the purchase price of these properties to Mrs. Zimmerman. But that's what you see before you tonight in the next couple ordinances and the resolution as well.
Questions? Anyone from the public? And your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 20-026 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska to Risa L. Zimmerman, trustee of the Risa L. Zimmerman Trust under agreement dated October 14, 2014.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 20-027. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that said ordinance be given Number 20-027. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 20-027 by number the first time, ordinance Number 20-027 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 20-027 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 20-027 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Bilzbach, that the ordinance Number 20-027 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? From the public? Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 20-027 has been passed and approved. Next is a resolution, Resolution Number 6589, executing a contract for sale of real estate to Risa L. Zimmerman, trustee of the Risa L. Zimmerman Trust under agreement dated October 14, 2014.
I move that Resolution Number 6589 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution Number 6589 be passed and adopted.
The only thing I would note again is purchase price is $7,500. Again, we came up with it by looking at the price per square foot of the surrounding ground. And also, that the city will be retaining a utility easement over Maple Street, or portion of Maple Street and a portion of Ninth Street as there are existing water main and electrical lines in that area.
Questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved 6-0. Resolution Number 6589 has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? We have two people, Mr. Hay first and then Mr. Grail second.
Mayor, can I hand out cheat sheets?
Yes, sir.
You?
Call them cheat sheets?
Thank you, Mr. Hay.
Those at school. No, you give this, give it to the lawyer.
Watch him, Paul. He's shifty.
Don't mind me, I'll just mark it up.
You'll find corrections.
My name is Paul Hay, I live at 101 Sugar Street in Beatrice. I'm retired as an extension educator for the University of Nebraska. As an extension educator and now as a retiree, I work with the Keep Beatrice Beautiful group in terms of a tire amnesty day, which we hold every other year in Beatrice. When people buy a tire from a tire retailer like Mike McLean, you pay a dollar into a fund at the Department of Environmental Quality. And then, if you have your old tire, you give Mr. McLean $2 to dispose of the old tire and he calls up the tire recyclers and have it done, unless you're cheap like Bob Morgan. And then, you take the tire home and you create a haven for mosquitoes for two years on the back of your garage and wait for the tire amnesty where you can haul it out there and slop it on the ground for nothing. Right, Bob?
No, I, I also.
He's just saving money. No comment. Okay, we got that down. So, the tire amnesty then utilizes this dollar and we get it a grant from the Department of Environmental Quality. That grant is sponsored by, and the responsibility for that grant lies with the Gage County Board of Supervisors. If we mess up, they're the ones that end up with the liability. So, we make sure that we don't mess up. An example of that is making sure we have a count and a weight on all the tires and know exactly what tonnage we're getting. We can allow up to 450 tons in this two-day event, which probably will be a day event. We have to allow for these tires maybe being a little heavier than we thought. We have to allow for what happened last time where we had 1,000 pounds, approximately a load, for basically all the loads that went out of here, some 18 or 19 loads, that was water weight because it wouldn't stop raining. And when you loaded those tires, you got some of that water in there and you, the city was very helpful last time in spraying for mosquitoes a couple times out there to help us out with that situation. We appreciate that. And the other thing is, we appreciate, we get the landowners around there, the residents is around there to help us. We've asked the city police to make sure that they kind of patrol a little bit there and look, we don't want people in there dumping extra tires. We don't want possibility of them, you know, monkeying around out there and getting hurt or worse yet, starting a fire. Would be a dangerous thing. So, we want to be sure that doesn't happen, be sure we've got as good a protocol as we can get to report any happenings like that and handle them as well as we can. Our goal is to get those tires out of there within a couple weeks. I'm here just to inform you of this. We've been going for a number of years. The real positive to our community in this is that we get rid of a lot of tires that are really a problem and probably would stay there and silage pile tires, the old Northeast Auto where they had the junkyard out there and like that. Somebody bought that property, cleaned up. We ended up getting some loads out of there. We try to really be pretty strict about no tire retailers when you get these tires clean, but, you know, we also try to err on the side. I had somebody today that they ended up with some tires dumped on them and they're going to have probably a farm truck load come out of nearby adjoining county. I said, "Yeah, we're going to bring those tires here." Our goal is to clean those up. We're not worried about finesse of some of that. We're worried about getting those tires cleaned up and taken care of properly. They're going to go to Butler County landfill, they grind them, a large part of them are buried, though they do try to recycle the steel out of those and like that, so that happens there. So, just to answer any questions you have, you know, we've had good cooperation with the sheriff's department and the Beatrice police in regard to working with this. And it is actually located in the city, but fairgrounds, you know, you're on the city side of the fairgrounds parking lot there, so.
Well, how long ago was it, how long ago was it that we had the last one? It seemed like it was a couple of years ago, maybe?
Your voice is deep, mayor, but I'm hard to hear. What?
How long was the, how long ago was the last collection?
Yes.
Was it two years ago?
Two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We've been going every other year on this base, something like that, so. And we upped the, my last time, we ran out within the first day, until this time, we upped the increase a little bit, we'll see how that goes, you know, so. Probably one error on the side, we do have a pair of independent truckers that are good for our community, they're not a retailer. As soon as the tires, you can get all kinds of thoughts on that, but whatever.
What was the limit two years ago? Like, where did we increase the limit from? It's now 450 tons? What was the limit last time?
We will, it says on the flyers, the 19th only, because we will have to shut it off and we anticipate that sometime on the 20th we'll end up being shut off.
Sure, did, you guys filled up last, the last time, though, right?
Right.
How much was that, the capacity?
How many?
How many tons?
How many tonnage did you?
Say again, ma'am.
How many tons did you guys collect last time?
Yeah, he's got an accent.
Say again.
How many tons did you guys collect last time with this event? This is 450 tons this time.
We had 325 or something like that last time.
I think it was 375.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This would be about, Taylor, this would be about 45,000 car tires.
Oh, you got to go down there, you got to see that. It's, it's just, it's unreal.
We have, we have quite a few people in landlords in Beatrice. There's one landlord that'll bring probably three pickup loads that he's been dumped on by tenants. Landlord that gets those kinds of things happen to him, so, you know, we help out and get those kinds of things.
Thanks for doing this.
Thanks, Paul, thanks for everything you do.
Get in there Sunday afternoon, look at it, it's just, it's amazing.
Lyndon, come on up.
Lyndon Grail, 1907 Washington Street. I just wanted to put some figures. I put the figures together for the county board and I think it's kind of interesting. We've done nine collections every other year, so that's over 18 years. And we've collected 3,642 tons tires and that amounts to 7,284,840,000 pounds, so that's a lot of tires.
Wow.
I just want to let, there's a reporting through DE, it's DE, they've changed their name, not DEQ, but we're the largest in the whole state. We're bigger than Omaha or anything, so it's a lot of tires.
Very good, thanks, Lyndon.
Thank you.
Mr. Grail?
Yes, my name is Alan Grail. I reside at 1907 Washington Street in Beatrice. I'm a lifelong native member of the city of Beatrice. My purpose here this evening is to compliment you on the successful project that you just recently developed, and that's the splash pad in Astro Park. My wife and I travel 19th Street and I always see somebody down in there using it. I think it's a tremendous benefit to our city and I just wanted to thank all of you for what you did in getting that pad in. Second thing would be, I would hope you would continue to look for another location that would benefit in that type of activity. But I don't talk to anybody out in the community that doesn't realize that that is a tremendous asset to the city of Beatrice. I hadn't seen any open letters, I hadn't seen anybody down here, but I for one believe you deserve a great big round of applause and a thank you for the effort. I know it was expensive, but 10 years from now, I don't think we will regret the fact that that pad is in there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alan, appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is Okay, next on our agenda is the Engage Quarterly Report. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Come on up. Beg your pardon.
Thank you. My name is Rochelle Baumann. I'm the Director of Health and Wellness at the Beatrice YMCA. And I just wanted to add a few comments regarding the river access that you're discussing. Again, I'm very thankful that you guys are bringing this up. We were able to have a fundraiser for our community for the YMCA on July eleventh, and we invited people to kayak on the Big Blue River. I just have some feedback that I got from that, as well as some interesting demographics. So we advertised for about two weeks to have people come visit our town and kayak on the Big Blue River. And on social media, we had one point seven thousand hits in those two weeks just to have people open that up and see what that was about. We had about a hundred and twenty kayakers come to Beatrice who lived within the town and outside of our town. Of those a hundred and twenty, we had thirty percent who were out of town. So twenty-two percent were from Lincoln, and the last eight percent were from Omaha, Marysville, Kansas, and Grand Island. So it was quite a few people from out of town that we weren't expecting. I myself belong to the Nebraska Canoe and Kayak Club, and there's questions about every other week on that club where the access points are in the Lower Big Blue. So a lot of people are interested in coming down to this area, but we just don't have the access points for that. Within the people that attended our event, thirty percent were aged twenty-one to thirty-four. So when we talk about young people coming to our town to visit or moving to our town, it's interesting that this is a great opportunity for them to try. The other thirty percent were thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds, and then the rest were older. So just having access to the river helps meet lots of different age groups. And the feedback that we got from the people that attended, first, we're asking when we're doing this again, when they can come back, when we're going to open it up for family opportunities for kids to come on the river. And the biggest complaint was that going all the way to Holmesville was a little bit of a longer trip than a lot of them would have planned to do. So even though they enjoyed it, they would like a shorter route. So talking about the input and output of the river, we really would love to see maybe some access points before Holmesville to take place. And then just looking into further programming with the river access, talking to the mental health specialists in town, there are some holes within our community to meet the needs for mental challenges, for physical challenges like diabetes prevention and hypertension. And this is an opportunity that a lot of people can utilize for low impact on their joints. Our cancer survivors are always looking for opportunities to get out and do things together. And so there's programming available that I would love to add for our community once we have access points on the river. So again, I just thank you for considering this as we move forward. It was a successful event, and we'd love to do something like this again.
Any questions, Rochelle?
No, but one for Toby. Since we've passed that, how long will it be before that access point is built?
There's a small issue to work through the Corps of Engineers, so that will be the driving point of length of time until it's up and ready.
Okay. Well, you got one coming.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Rochelle. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for hosting.
Anyone else for the public forum? All right, next on the agenda is the Engage Quarterly Report. Engage Director Trevor Lee. Trevor, it's all yours.
Mayor, Council, welcome to Taylor. Glad to have you here. If you have any questions, I'm not the guy, because I've only been here for four months, so. I think the last time I was here was my first day on the job for our last quarterly report. So I know you all have places to go this evening, things to do, so I will keep the summer short. You have, you've had the report was in the packet form. Just touch on a few things. This is the last quarter of our fiscal year. Some of the activities that have at least come on since I've been here, we finished up the COVID-19 Business Impact Survey. Got some great data on that, and that really guided some of the information we put out there through our social media, our website. We've continued what began as a weekly Water Cooler Wednesday Talk, which is just a Facebook livestream that people can also watch later, going down every, going every other week or twice a month on that. So very successful survey, and that will also, as a side note, when we're going towards recertification in five years, those will count as a standard BRE visit. So it was kind of two birds with one stone. Continue making direct connections with area employers. As you can imagine, that's been a challenge to do the one-on-one interactions over the last four months like I had hoped to, but things are opening up slowly. We're getting tours, certainly having a lot of virtual connections. On the new business attraction objective, this last quarter, we've submitted on two primary projects totaling over six hundred million dollars of investment and three to four hundred jobs. There's thirteen active projects total, but these two probably have the best legs or at least are taking the most amount of our attention at this time. Mentioned the Water Cooler Talk. We will continue to do that. Now, looking ahead, we're looking at some of the traditional events we've had coming up. Manufacturing Month in Nebraska is October. That's always included or has recently included a manufacturing day where we try to get our primary employers, our manufacturers, in front of our area high school students. Who knows what that's going to look like now coming into this fall? So that's one of the activities we'll begin together with the schools, local manufacturers, and try to figure out how we can do that virtually. Aaron has done a tremendous job of continuing the marketing efforts of Engage, the website, weekly op-eds, not weekly op-eds, but regular content relevant to what's going on now. And we still partner with Golden Shovel Agency to manage our website and create customized content. Moving forward, and I just noted it in the cover letter, our targets, our strategies are not going to change right now, but I think the way we go about them will be different. Probably not throw some headquarter visits into the mix, be more selective with our travel. And in those target industries, really find those, those industries that have a very large U.S. market for their product or service, but have a very large offshore production. So looking at the reshoring and onshoring, onshoring and reshoring targets, I think will make a lot of sense for us moving forward. Any questions for me?
Any questions, gentlemen? You might want to just give everybody an update on the biodiesel plant. Even though we may not have had a lot to do with it, it's going to employ some twenty people, high-paying jobs, and there's other opportunities that we can certainly utilize with those individuals.
You summed it up very well, Mayor. Yeah, so sold to Marathon. We just found out about it in the last week, but once that transaction was official, it became public knowledge, and I got to do a phone interview out of my pickup on my way to my camping trip last weekend. So, yeah, twenty good-paying jobs. And I think that's their first entrance into the state of Nebraska, which is exciting, I think, not just for Beatrice or Gage County, but the state as a whole. So it's a good, it's a good positive thing for us.
Terry, I saw that you had forty high school students with the manufacturing jobs. Have you ever thought of expanding that to service jobs such as BSDC, Mosaic, and places like that to include? Because they are big employers also.
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a really good point. So that program itself was the manufacturing day as part of Manufacturing Month. But I know that, at least in the past, Walker and Aaron had sat down with the ESU to talk about internships, job shadowing, so that would go across all sectors, so something that should be continued.
Do we have any idea on the Marathon Company, if they will even come close to the utilities of what the previous one used?
The initial indications are they probably will not. Sounds like they're going to use the facility a little different than the last owner did, but we are still working through those and trying to find out exactly what their needs will be.
Any other comments, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? Trevor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the City Administrators' Report. Tobias?
Just a couple of highlights to have in there. We'll start with the Hannibal Park Bike Trail. If anybody's been out watching that project, it continues to move along. They're out around the high school now. Please do not walk or run on the trail. It's still under construction. But it is progressing, so things are moving right along. They anticipate this will hit their construction deadline, so things are going well there. Wastewater Treatment Facility, this is kind of the forgotten project, right? It's not that exciting, but we are have the major dewatering project going on there. Pre-construction meetings tomorrow, so they'll get that project hopefully kicked off and started here soon. Fire station, if anybody's driven by the fire station, hopefully it'll stop raining sometime and they'll be able to continue a little more dirt work there. But you've seen probably about four hundred flags in the ground. Those are for all the geo peers. That'll be the next thing that's installed on site. So they'll have kind of a small little drill rig there, start installing those. Probably yet this week, depending on the weather, they got like four hundred and fifteen of them to install. And so it may be a little bit noisy in the area, but it should be done relatively quickly. Then you'll see the foundation go in while the walls are being constructed off-site because they're poured concrete, and then those will be coming and be tilted up as well here relatively soon. So that progress, that project continues to move forward, really no surprises here lately, which is a good news. Storecraft, if anybody's driven by the storecraft site, it's cleaner, right? I'm not saying it's clean, but it's cleaner than it has been. The pile of concrete that is on site is to be removed by September first. Most of that concrete will get crushed on site and then trucked to the South Beltway Project in Lincoln for use as part of that, the base for that project. So again, there may be a period of time around that area where it might be a little loud, might be a little dusty, but that's what's going on, is there'll be crushing the concrete and moving it out of here hopefully by September first. That's what their contract requires them to do.
Have you heard any more about what they may be putting in there?
They're still working on that one and still trying to come up with some finalization for some plans. Nothing's been decided on the deadline yet, so we're still working, but hopefully get something done. A couple, well, probably a couple of months ago now, we had some ladies here from the gardening club that talked to us about the West Court Street Bandstand, looking for some money. Happy to announce that with a couple of good partners here in our community, we've been able to raise some funds for that bandstand for them to make the improvements. Taylor did a great job writing a grant, and one of them and a couple of other ones, some others helped us out with, but we were able to raise the funds, and so you should be seeing improvements be made to that bandstand over the next couple of months, and then obviously before their hundred-year celebration next June that they're anticipating. So we're excited to see that project move forward. And then probably the biggest news out there is we got our sales tax numbers for May. We got those in. For May of two thousand twenty, for the general and street funds, we received three hundred and two thousand dollars. And for the fire station, we received right about a hundred thousand dollars. When you compare that to May of two thousand nineteen, that's an increase of three point one percent. Thought that was very good news. For the fiscal year to date, we received a little over three million dollars, and we had budgeted two point eight million dollars. So sales receipts fiscal year to date, what we, first, what we budgeted over that. And for the first year that we had the half-cent sales tax in place for the fire station, we raised one million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. I didn't want to leave out those pennies, and they can be important.
They are important.
So again, I think it just shows that things have rebounded well here. We're waiting to see what obviously June does, and hopefully things continue to rebound, and hopefully everybody continues to buy local. But any questions anybody has?
Kickin' old Covid's butt, ain't we?
Wastewater Treatment Plant, when will that construction conceivably start?
I think the last time I saw they were looking at construction, we'll have better understanding after tomorrow's meeting, but I think you'll see it in probably September, is my guess.
And how long do you think, or would you anticipate it will take?
It may take upwards of a year. Initially, contract allowed for fifteen months, but I think, you know, we're already in for a couple of months, so I think you'll see probably roughly a year's worth of construction.
All the questions I had. Anybody else?
Building permits. I'm looking for Exhibit D, and I can't find it. Hundred and two building permits this last quarter, is that, how does that compare? Three hundred and sixty-nine for the year, is that?
I don't know. I have to go back and look. I don't know if I have any building permits we issued last year.
I can't find it to the D here, so.
But I know we had an increase during March, April, May. A lot of people were at home building decks and fences, and so we issued a lot of those permits during those months.
It seemed like a reasonable number.
I think the dollar amount was down, but partly it's due to some places not building big, giant buildings this year like they did last year, which certainly helps those dollar amounts. But I think the number of permits were up because, again, you had a lot of smaller permits that were issued this time.
Any other questions, Tobias? Anyone from the public? All right, thanks, Tobias. Next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on August third, two thousand twenty, in these chambers. And a work session will be held on June twenty-seventh, if deemed necessary, at seven o'clock in these chambers. Mr. Claybo?
I move that the meeting be adjourned at seven forty-five P.M.
Second.
Moved by Claybo, seconded by Billsbuck, that the meeting be adjourned at seven forty-five P.M. And your vote, please, and that is approved six zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.